So call the council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we have a forum present?
Yes, we do.
All right. The first order of business is to review and approve our minutes from the council meeting of October 5th.
That's good to me.
Deana, I do have a change in here. Under the polling of council on page two, Cynthia's comment. The county's Department of Health is working with Dollar General for a long-range solution. That should be public health and the town and the county is working because DPH, there's not a whole lot they can do because they don't have food there. It's going to be more on the towns' ordinance and policies to come up with a long-range solution rather than them.
So it is the public health?
DPH, the town and the county.
They do have food.
And the county.
They don't have fresh food. The Department of Ag comes in when there's fresh produce there.
You know, there are some Dollar Generals that do sell produce.
So you know, that's one of the things that I'm going to do is when we, if we're able to run sewer up there and they can tap onto it, they can take their septic fields out and expand the store and put it in a fresh market. I've already thrown that idea out at Dollar General to get them to buy into the sewer line part.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Everything looks, everything else looks good to me.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Elizabeth has the first.
Second.
Tom has the second. All in favor?
I guess I haven't gotten some what in here.
Oh.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can. All right. Unanimous, thank you. The first item of new business that we have is this is an additional, this is basically adding on to and cleaning up our alcohol policy, alcoholic beverages, chapter 10. And basically what this change to the ordinance will do will allow our businesses that have an alcohol license to cater events with alcohol outside the town limits. Correct, Deana?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because the Department of Revenue, before they sell alcohol, they have to have a caterer's license.
Okay.
Outside of their primary location, they have to have a caterer's license. We don't offer a caterer's license inside our occupational tax.
Okay.
So this will add the option of a caterer's license for those that serve alcoholic beverages that already have an alcohol beverage license.
Okay.
Now, is this an alcohol or pouring license? Two different ones, right?
This is not a pouring because we don't have anybody that sells liquor. We only have beer and wine right now.
But is this a pouring license or is this a?
Yeah.
It is, it is, it permits them to pour.
I was talking about like, the only one is the rest.
Just beer and wine.
I mean, he wants to go outside and do beer and wine, that's legal, according to this.
Yes, yes. If, if we had this, it's not currently legal, which is what brought it to our attention because he wanted to do an event but didn't have a caterer's license.
It's Sonoit.
It's Sonoit, yeah.
It's a service beer and wine. He's already got his food truck, so he can cater food but not alcohol.
First time he's ever done this. Do I have a caterer's license?
Uh, I don't know.
No, no. But since it, since we are changing the ordinance, we have to do a first reading and a second reading.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll say. Now, that's the only, like, only business we have in town that has a pouring license, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, for now. Hopefully, we will attract more restaurants and then we'll have more pouring licenses. Okay, so Elizabeth has the first, Stan has the second. All in favor? Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, is this optional for him?
What do you mean optional?
Just because he's got a.
He's asking for it.
Does he have to, does he have to pay us a hundred dollars so he can go somewhere?
Yes, he has to.
Has to pay.
We don't have any catering, beverage, and our existing alcohol licenses.
Can he, can he opt not to be a caterer?
He's asking for it so he can go do things.
I know, I know, but.
But yes, he could, yes, he could opt not to add the caterer's license.
Okay, so if a company comes along and they don't want to have a catering license, they don't have to.
No, no, no.
This is separate.
Okay.
First, in order to do it though, you have to have a known previous pouring license.
Correct.
So this is an add-on.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
An option.
Option. Okay, so Elizabeth had the first, Stan had the second. All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. Next thing is going to be our budget as of October 31st, 2020. Deana, lay on some good news for us.
Well, we have received 110% of our budget.
Woohoo!
And we've only spent out 72%.
Woohoo!
Yay, Deana!
Yes, yay, Deana.
Yeah, it looks very good.
Very much so.
I'm excited about our budget this year.
Awesome. Good job.
Even though we're, you know, we're hurting a little bit in rentals, we have already picked up probably $4,000 of business in the last two months, so we just come and, I mean, next year's going to be a bomb.
Nice.
So I think that in December, we're totally booked right now.
Nice.
What were you saying, Stan?
What do we do with excess money we have as in a separate account?
It goes right back into the general fund.
Yeah, it goes into, and it goes into our general fund as cash on hand, and that's why I will, I typically will refer to this as the operating budget, and then the general fund is just our cash savings, basically. I mean, that's what we've saved over the last.
Our cash, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. And, and I tell you what, we've done, we've done a jam-up job of it. I mean, we're, we are, we are doing a very good job of it, and we're sitting on a, not a good bit of cash, just probably what, 250, 225? 280? Okay, so.
That's better being in the red.
Yeah. Yes, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, we're very, very, very happy with our budget. And one of the things that you will notice, and, and we, and we've done this consistently, we've got 110 of our budget received and 72% spent. That's because we under-budget our revenue and over-budget our expenses. That has kind of shifted a little bit in 2021 because adding the personnel that we're going to go into executive session for, it's got to come from somewhere, and we didn't want to put all of it on to our real estate tax, a lot of our property taxes. You know, we know that the property tax is going to go up. We're thinking about, to about 24,000, 25,000, but we budgeted 21. So we've got a little bit of a cushion there just to, you know, just to be fiscally responsible. I mean, that's really, that's what government should do. We should be responsible with the money that we're spending. Ah, we need to talk to him.
I know that person.
Hey, he's talking about the game this weekend.
Well, I've been with senior services.
Oh. Yeah, Trace, the one that we're working with with the senior services and all.
I called him at 10 o'clock this morning, he's finally calling me back.
Ah, you should have put him on speakerphone, we all could have talked to him.
Oh, no, you wouldn't have hurt him.
Not this late at night?
Okay, he's probably been in the wine already.
Eleven, eleven jobs with Calweeta County was cut. Did y'all see that in today's newspaper?
Oh, I saw that.
What now?
Eleven positions for the county. I think nine was active, but 11 positions have been cut with Calweeta County. It's in today's newspaper.
I think the city near him done that too.
And a lot of senior citizens' events, and we're kind of concerned about here. I'm not sure when they're going to come next year, but I don't know if they're going to go back to Sonoit anytime soon, so we're, you know, we've got that IGA for them to come here so they clean our buildings, so that may stop.
Yeah, it's sad though.
Anything else on the budget, Deana?
No, I think, I think it speaks for itself.
Yeah.
What's this big hit on, or big thing on the grant money received?
We received that $18,000.
Okay, from the Fed?
Yep, from the Fed.
Okay.
Well, no, from the governor, from the state of Georgia.
From the Fed, so.
Yeah, well, we received about $2,600 through the safety and liability grant that helped us pay for IT in the box. We also received an LMS grant for the highways, and we need to start spending some money on the highways to pay that, you know, to do our 30%, because I've got about $5,500 in our SLOs 2013 for that. And we've been paying the county to do some things on Sunset and the drive, the culverts that we cleaned out and some of the stuff like that, so, and we can use that for that, but we still have, but most of it was for the governor's cares act grant that we received.
So do we need to accept this budget?
Um, no, this, no, this is just an update on here. We will have the, the first reading of the budget December, and then the second reading January and adopted officially in January.
Okay.
But yeah, this is just an FYI for you guys and for the public, of course, out with people in TV land that are watching this, to know that we're talking about the budget. Deana, anything else on the budget you want me to talk about?
I don't think so. I don't think, we received our biggest chunk of real estate property in the current year, this month, in December, so I think we talked about our motor vehicles, ethyl oil and TABT taxes, but other than that, the only thing that we're really getting hit on is our community center rentals. But, you know, we've done so good in other areas, it's really covered that up.
It's balanced it out, yeah. Yeah, so kudos to Deana and staff for keeping everything in line because it's, it is really showing, we're doing really, really, really good with it.
Yeah, because we normally would be about 83 to 85% payout where we set it to. So when we said no more spending in March, we've done little spending, little spending, just basic utilities and, you know.
You want to, you want to address some of these big increases in what we received?
Yes, we did in the new budget, 2021.
Oh, yeah, what we will do is before we, yeah, well, first off, we, that's some of the cushion that we've balanced out in the 21 budget. We're not expecting to hit 110 of the budget received, but we're going to do an amended budget in January to realign what we actually spent with what was the approved budget.
If you, I've got some notes right here. If you look on the expense accounts, we don't have anything in red right now because of good planning. However, there are going to be a couple of things, like our, like our streetlight expenses, our garbage disposal for our residents, our Heartland payroll, our FICA, things of that nature is going to be over just pennies. So we're going to have to do an amended, adjusted, amended budget to do a budget transfer to the ones in red and take some from the excess on other ones. So we'll do an amendment in January whenever we adopt the second reading for the budget Like right now, streetlights, yes, we're at 89% when we should be at 83, so, you know, we're contracted services with, Heartland payroll is at 91% when we should be at 83. So there's a few things that's over, over budget, but we're just not in the red yet until, you know, we may be in December.
Any other questions on the budget? Okay, the next bit of new business, Julie, do you want to talk about the banners?
Yeah, we're looking at buying some holiday banners for the streetlights in town, and we've contacted three companies and come down to one. We can't, we contacted a local company, which they don't, they couldn't even touch it because of the pricing.
Oh.
Yeah. There's a lot more than ours. Quick as a wink is the company that we approached in town, and he sent us a, sorry, we can't do this for you. But the one company is called Display Sales, and we're looking at custom pole banners, two feet by three feet. They're, they're vinyl, the image would be on the front and the back, and it has, we have the poles, we have nine sets of two poles, so we would be looking to buy nine flags or nine banners. They're having, they're having a 15% off sale. It would be regularly $73 a banner, and with the sale, it would be $62.05 each, so we're looking at $638.25.
And that's the cheapest we can get.
And that's the cheapest.
Have y'all seen a picture of these banners?
We do have a choice.
About Amazon.
They did a mock-up for us. One is a purplish-blue background, and it has a Christmas tree, and it says, Seasons Greetings?
Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays, and it says Town of Sharpsburg.
How long do you think they would last?
Well, we definitely have to take them down.
They are.
Well, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but.
They are UV vinyl protect, you know, vinyl protection.
They're going to be up for what, like, maybe four to six weeks a year?
Are they similar to the ones that we have in our neighborhood? They've been 10 years they've been up, come out.
And honestly, I don't look at these as almost a stopgap measure until we can get, once we get downtown, up and thriving and doing some stuff, then we can go out and we can upgrade and improve and maybe do lights and tinsel and all, all that. This is just a stopgap measure for, for now.
And I looked in Sonoit, and they have theirs up already, and all theirs says is Seasons Greetings, doesn't even say, I don't think it says Sonoit on it.
And we actually called them to get us in touch with the company that did theirs, so they didn't respond to that.
They never responded, and we had another catalog company that we called, theirs were 90 something, $96 a flag. So the good thing is that we have the, the sets of the pole, you know, for hanging.
And these are actually going to hang on the decorative streetlights, not the telephone power poles.
We have nine, nine decorative, so it's going to take 18 poles.
And what's that? When would they be in if we ordered them?
Um, I think you said within two weeks? I think it was a two-week turnaround, so that's still a bit of a time.
Getting used to them this year, we need to move on it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're proposing to, to get your approval.
Because we can also buy the single strands of LED lights, because they actually have plug-ins on these decorative streetlights, so the lights would be good as well as the little banners.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a good idea.
I'm making a motion to move forward with it.
All right.
I'll second.
Stan has the first, Elizabeth has the second. All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, um, do we have any questions on the new business, the amendment to alcoholic beverages, the budget, and then the holiday banners from council or public?
I have a question. We mentioned this was a whole row or two, we got the downtown up and on and again, is there any progress in that?
Uh, yes.
It looks like it has gone back.
Yes, and mayor's minutes, I have an update for that in mayor's minutes.
I would request that we not have any that say Merry Xmas.
No, no. We will not do that. No. Is it, usually a season's greetings are happy holidays.
What about Merry Christmas? What about Merry Christmas?
I don't think we found any that said Merry Christmas, do we?
Of course not.
Okay, under old business, we have, we, I would like to get council to approve an amendment to the frigid frog site plan. Basically, there was a 10-foot error, either coming or going, and basically the, the building position as it currently stands does not match what was presented on the site plan. And so our options at the time were to have them move it, have them resubmit a site plan, or, what was the third one, Deana?
Well, she said that Jeff, her husband, is the one that placed the markers down, and Ruel and I knew immediately that they didn't have 63 feet from the fence to the back of their building. So we made them redo this site plan to add 10 foot to the front and just leave it 53 in the rear. We're not sure if even the fence is in the wrong place, we don't know.
Yeah, there were a lot of questions. So basically, what this is doing is this is correcting any mistakes that were made. I did talk to the property owner behind there, and it's Keith Rose, and he has no problem with it. I talked to Keith earlier this month when we were trying to work it out, but this is, it is and it is not a technicality, but at the same time, I wanted council to know that what they approved earlier had been monitored, and then council has the opportunity to make sure that what they approved is actually happening, because that's what it was, is what you guys approved did not.
Right.
Take place. And, and I did not want to set the precedence of you guys saying, this is how we're going to do it, and then just knocking it down.
She's also failed three inspections, so I've, on her footings, so I've had to send her, we received the bill from Safield for $455, and I had to send her a new invoice for $375 to pay for those three failed inspections.
What was failing on it?
The first one was done on October the 8th, missing footings, see approved plans for location and details. The second one, approved plan shows seven rows of footings spread along the long side of structure, remaining three rows noted in the first inspection, not done, marked on the ground but not dug, not ready for inspection. The third one, structure proposed location in approved site plan do not reflect actual location, pending revisions and approvals, but then they did it on 1016 and they passed. She also passed her electrical and plumbing, so.
So she's ready to go just about it?
Almost, almost.
Yep, just about.
She's got, I think she's got a lot of stuff on the inside doing, and then she's got her HVAC, and we'll see.
Cool.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion.
All right, so Stan has the first.
Second.
Elizabeth has the second, and, all right, unanimous, thank you. All right, that takes care of our new business, our old business, and now we come to our public comments section. Ms. Polly, you got anything?
Deana, you want to press my question?
Okay.
What was your question? Well, I'm just asking about, he made some reference to, to hold the light, the decoration for the holidays was going to be kind of in between getting the town up in money, so I thought maybe they'd heard something wrong about, and then go be some, you businesses or something, you might make that sound. And he said he did.
Okay. Alan, anything? All right, polling of council, I will start on the far end, Mr. Teagle.
I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Parkman.
As long as we have to Deana, I don't know, it's just me, but I'm still, I didn't give my recycle last week and.
Did you not get a letter from them? They have started every other week now.
No.
They were supposed to send out letters.
Yeah, we didn't get a letter.
No?
Well, that's fine, as long as we know what to do.
We just received an email from another waste company. I'm almost enter, feel like entertaining that.
What company is that?
I think we need to, yeah.
Well, I don't, it's just an email, I don't even remember the name.
It was in the, it was in the last week's paper, because I kind of scan the papers every day for information.
New in paper?
Noonan went with three different, they had bids from three different companies, and they chose a new one.
They chose CLM.
What is it?
CLM.
That's, I think that's the one I've got the letter.
Who do you have?
I think we need to open it up for bids, because we've just been using the same company, and I think they're taking this for granted.
Oh, yeah. Which one is that?
Isn't that Pollard?
That's.
Pollard.
We've never had an issue with Pollard, they recycle every week.
That's one out of Sonoit, yeah.
Yeah. That's who we have.
I think we ought to need to open it up for bids, what is it, in January?
So our contract with him runs January to January, I believe.
July to June.
Is it July to July?
A 30% CPI increase in July.
So maybe, maybe it is June.
You need to check it.
See, and that's, that's what I was going to say, there's, I want to say there's a 30 or 60-day notice.
Who is the contract with?
Uh, GFI, but it used to be Waste Industries.
Well, that's in Noonan Industries.
Mm-hmm, okay.
GFL.
GFL, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, GFL. So as far as putting it out to, to bid, we can start the process, I don't know what the timeline is or what the policies are, the town's policies are, it'll be the first one that, that we've done, but yeah, I mean, if we.
I mean, if we have to wait until July, that's fine, but I mean, we got time to work on it anyway.
Yeah, let's at least look at the contract and see.
Okay, sure.
I know.
All right, so Stan, anything else?
That's all I got.
Elizabeth?
Someone reached out to me on Halloween, wondering if next Halloween we could discuss maybe doing like a trunk or treat in the parking lot for kids, so I said I. I told, yeah, I told him I would bring it up and.
And you know, honestly, if we had, if we had had a completely done back parking lot, I would have loved to have done something.
Well, even if we have a small one, you know, just for something.
Does the church not ever have the trunk or treat?
We did a trunk or treat, we had over 300 kids.
Wow.
It was busy, busy.
Yeah.
And we had the church sterilized the next day for Sunday service. But it was, it was amazing turnout.
Yeah.
A lot of kids, a lot of visitors, a lot of people we've never seen before, we hope to see again.
Yeah.
Yeah, great turnout.
Sonoit did a, something different this year on my subdivision, we have a clubhouse with pool, so they had a costume contest for the three different age brackets, and they had a parade around the, you know, they told everybody decorate your lawnmower and, you know, your tractor.
Belt car.
Yeah, belt cars.
Love to say. We decorate and track.
Then they opened it up to the community to have trunk or treating if you, if you left your lights on, so it was cool.
Yeah.
It was cool.
Okay.
We have a lot of kids.
We can look into that somewhere next year again.
So one of the things, I think that this kind of public event planning will be a great additional duty for staff to take on in the coming year. So if we want to look at some, just, just two or three events, you know, maybe a quarterly event or something like that, but, but that, that may be something to put down, and we can do, yeah, that much.
You can add, check the battery.
Battery too.
No, don't make them do that.
Man, you just, you just, I don't know, man, I'm telling you, look, it's going to be worth the $1,200 to buy the new solar sign, I promise you.
No.
Yes.
Give me, give me something to work on.
We can adapt a solar panel for the old, the triple charge.
Say, you know, the redneck in me keeps saying, there has got to be a way that you can just splice it in to the.
A triple charge.
To the, yeah, because all you're doing is just charging the battery, just going from the battery into the panel.
The rednecks here really probably figured it out.
Well, $500 later.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're going to be driving by and that sign's going to be burning because we've overloaded it. Fire in Sharkburn.
I'll be up there in one.
Okay, Ms. Ray, do you have any information from the clerk, for the clerk's minutes? First time I've been able to say that.
It's very hard to say that because very little have I answered as Deana Ray or my name.
Right, she went off and got married.
I forget, you know, it's just, the other day I did something and my husband was like, you had me pick up food under your old name.
Oh, he's got it.
They didn't have it under Ray, they had number Robert, so.
All right, clerk's minutes?
Yeah, I don't have anything. We're just plugging along. Next month is going to be very busy. We've got a couple of public hearings and budgets to pass and.
Conquest.
Yeah, office passing tax, packets has to go out, alcohol licensing gets paid in December, so there's a lot of things, background checks and things that we have to do, so it's going to be a very busy month for us.
Mayor's updates and mayor's minutes all combine into each other. We had a great, great, great turnout at the book sale and at the Sharpsburg Market, October 17th. We probably had several hundred come through here.[1780.33] We probably had several hundred come through here. Uh, we had a lot of positive feedback on it. Everybody's looking to do it. In fact, um, Mr. Flavin is probably gonna come to council, Jan- December, January, I think.
Yes.
And hoping to make this a more formal thing throughout twenty twenty-one. So we're gonna have to be thinking about, because he's a nonprofit, we 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 have gifted the use of the park of, the park and pavilion for for the remainder of this year. But he's gonna come to us and ask.
Nine more festivals.
Uh, di- uh, di- basically do it monthly next year to have the farmer's market out there. There may be some interest about using the inside as well. So we'll have to, we'll have to think about that. On the nine days that um, he wanted to use it, looking at it from last year's numbers, we had about what, thirty-five hundred dollars?
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty in in potential revenue that we would be giving up in order to host the the farmer's market, the way that we did it last time. So he'll come to us and and we can think about that and discuss it. Part of the downtown updates that Ms. Polly had asked about is they are continuing to work with the bridges about bringing in their um, food truck and the outside events and repairing the buildings for, it's not a team club or a team hangout, but a clubhouse for team hungry. And that's what all the money and whatnot is going for. Um, we continue, they started the septic study, um, not not this week, last week. They started it last week. So we should have it in the next week or so to see how much capacity we can provide to the bathrooms coming up here. Uh, so those are the downtown updates. They continue to work with the bridges. We should have the septic information for the bathrooms here in the next couple of weeks, which will help them make an additional decision. Um, of course, we will have to decide as a council whether to go through the the recommendations in the septic study, but we can do that um, when the time comes. Because once we put septic up there, it makes it a requirement for those, for the bathrooms to be connected. Once we put the septic line in there, there's a line in our ordinance that says if it's reasonably available. And from me to Brad is reasonably available. And that's about the distance that, well, it's a little bit further than that, but it's not too far off of that.
I forgot to add in my um, clerk's minutes, I've talked to the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts and they're gonna come in after Thanksgiving and clean the uh, library courtyard. And we're gonna add some mulch around the front walkways and stuff. And we were, I was talking to him this morning about we're gonna want to put some tables at my courtyard and he thinks that's a very good idea for the Eagle to start as a project. So we might be working with the Boy Scouts a little bit in depth to get that courtyard up and and run in. That'll fit real well with the Flavins.
Yes, yes, it will. And and the the thing that encourages me about this is is even though the conversation is fast moving, it continues to be positive. You know, we haven't gotten any pushback from either the property owners or the business owners that are interested in doing stuff. And the the conversation has kind of expanded from just doing the the old wooden post office, the vacant lot to the left, and then using the vacant lot further left of that for parking. Now they're talking about doing, finding businesses within their group, their community and renting the 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 old general store, the old brick post office, and then maybe even that knickknack shack. So we're.
Nice.
Keep keep fingers crossed and throw a couple of prayers upstairs for 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 those conversations to continue well.
If if the sewer line to the to our septic becomes a a stopping point, we need to take a look at letting them use this bathroom down here. Um, because it was designed as a community service to help us maintain our cityhood. And it's locked up.
Who's gonna take care of it?
Yeah, that's an issue we can address, but it's there and you don't wanna stop the potential development.
When we have renters renters here, that's who pays for that outside right now. You know? I mean, if you're having a wedding, you wouldn't want walk-in people to come in, you know? I don't know.
Well, you can stru- you can you can address those those details. You got bathroom right there. People can use it. They're in here good away. I just hate to have the, I just hate to not use that if it's gonna block this over here.
Yeah, yeah. And un- unfortunately, the town's position has been that those exterior bathrooms are for renters. There's too many questions about liability, um, ADA compliance and all that. And I hate to go back on twelve years of policy. At you know, at this point.
Well, that's, we oughta, we oughta at least fess up to the idea that that is a possibility. Even if we have to go back and, you know, have a, sit down and talk about it, it's something that we can't, we shouldn't.
Fee schedule or something, you know?
I don't see why we, I mean, it's, it just in general, we built the thing and we didn't build it so we could bring it out to people who were having a wedding. It was a public service. It was part of, it was one of the things we offered. Like I said, it's a, it's one of the five or six things we have to to do to maintain our cityhood.
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
No?
Not 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 the restroom. That's more garbage, property tax, library, um.
Well, that's fine. Maybe I'm wrong, but I still don't, I still, to me, it's, it, if we've got a, if we've got a a block and the block is not having bathrooms for these people across the street, and we've got a bathroom right here, let's look at the possibility of using that.
Now, no, as long as there was some um, lever or mechanism to, uh, may maybe for a limited amount of time until they could install the bathrooms, I'd certainly be open to that. But it's twenty twenty. We need running water in bathrooms on the north side of Main Street. You know, that's.
Well, I'm all in favor of doing that, but I'm just saying this, you know, let's not clear this deal because we can't do it.
Why can't they already have water that's turin? Why don't they already have water?
They can, can't they?
There's nowhere for it to go. If we put a sink in there.
That's right. They don't have sex.
Where does it, yeah, there's.
What about that bathroom in the old post office right there? He still is not talking about opening that up to his people?
I don't know. That, uh, last, I don't know.
Is that being rented out?
The church.
To the church.
The church was there. The, yes, there's a church there.
Is that an actual church, though?
Yeah, I've met the lady.
Yeah, she's rented here for several times.
Yeah.
Beverly, Brenda?
Yes, Beverly.
Beverly, okay.
Brenda.
This.
That was Brenda, yeah.
Brenda.
For a church?
Mm-hmm.
Anything is moving up.
Nothing.
Must be.
Oh, yeah, small church. Okay, um, yes, ma'am.
May I make a comment supporting what I think Tom was asking?
Sure.
When they, I was on the council at the time that the park was being built, the pavilion and the park and the replacements were being added. And at that time, there was no notion that all of this building had any part of the restrooms. If my understanding is correct, and I can't remember, I think Brad wasn't here yet. They were forced to put, I shouldn't say forced, they were required to put the restrooms in if they had a public forbid. So I might wanna go back and check there and see that. I don't think those restrooms were ever attached to this building. It was always attached to other use of the pavilion.
Pavilion, okay.
But that will be in the record somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
And I think that's what you asked me more than Tom.
Yeah.
Right.
Sort of.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, uh, we do need to go into executive session to look at personnel dollars in conjunction with the twenty twenty-one budget. I wanna provide you guys some information, uh, so that way you can think about it for the first reading in um, December. So if I can get a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Elizabeth has the first.
Second.
Wester to discuss personnel.
Mistress, okay. All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Isn't all that?
Well, Elizabeth, did you make the motion?
I did.
Yes.
And you seconded it, something, and now blowed it out.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
So now we need to close the executive session.
Oh, we close.
Oh, okay. Well, this one just does to open.
It's moved to open. A motion to move to open, exactly. If you wanna put it in motion to close, exactly.
Yep, yep, okay. So we have concluded new business, old business, public comments, holding the council, clerk's minutes, mayor's stuff, executive session, personnel. Is there anything anybody else wants to talk about or discuss?
Yep.
All right, if not, can I get a, Tom?
We need to go talk to those building contractors or those suppliers. There's only about three of them.
Yeah.
We're writing a letter for them.
Okay. So what we'll do is if you can find the addresses, I'll have staff gin up a letter for us and then we'll send it to them. Then we'll follow up with the visit maybe a week later. How about that? Does that sound good?
Yep.
Did you get that?
No.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a letter to the building contr- uh, uh, building supply contractors around here. And then a week or so later, Tom and I will go out and follow up with them to make sure they know.
So you're gonna hand deliver maybe?
No, we'll mail it and then we'll follow up with the visit afterwards. All right, all business being discussed before council, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Well, okay, so Stan had the first, Elizabeth had the second.
I didn't hear you.
All in favor? It's cause you were talking. Unanimous, thank you very much. Can we begin to adjourn?